Thank you Board and Superintendent, but the voters are not happy with inaction that you took at Butterfield Ranch Elementary. We admire and support the new interim principal, Ms. Warner, who is amazing, and the assistant principal, Ms. Friedman, who is new, is full of passion for their kids. We are confident if we work together, we can bring Butterfield back to greatness. Thank you for the Board and Superintendent for finally taking action, but the voters are not happy with the slow reaction that you have, and you did not address the concerns on January 16th, when the teachers and many people came to this board and asked for action. It did not happen until unfortunately, we had to stage a boycott and keep our kids out of school. We had forty-three percent of the kids not go to school, which is horrible. We didn't want to do that, but ultimately, the only way to get action was to pull kids out of school. That's horrible. That's not what should be happening. We were forced to send that message. We want to remind the Board that we elected you, and really, we only have two that are really supporting us, Andrew Cruz and James Knott. Those are the two that are supporting us. The rest of you guys have really have your own agendas, and I really would like you guys to please address this and please help us, and we want you to be more proactive in the future, learn from this horrible mistake of non-action, and do not repeat this in the future. Huge pack of inaction to our school. Students got little surf, teachers suffered, and some even left mid-year. This poor boy was given behavioral support sooner, he would have been able to have been helped, and Ms. B.C. would not be in the trouble that she's in right now. This is a great light card from one of the daughters in Ms. B.C.'s class. She misses her teacher. She literally says she wishes that you weren't at home and you were helping her in the classroom. That is just horrible. So, we need to get those teachers and kids supported. Kids need additional behavioral help, where they have special, some have special needs, some just have some help. They have a huge billing issue that we need to address, and ultimately, it should not take six months or even five years to get special needs kids help, because my daughter took two and a half years and lots of supports to get her the help that she needed. So, we are imploring the Board to please, in the future, do not do this mistake again. This is horrible. We should never had to do this. Ultimately, we need behavioral aides that are trained. We need these teachers that are in the regular classroom to be trained. They need to be trained, because unfortunately, we're going to have all of these problem kids in the regular classes. We can't just shovel them off to special needs, especially right now, when everybody is big about integrating and putting them into the classroom, the regular classroom, to integrate them. Only way we can integrate them is if we have good behavioral support. Good behavioral support is B.C.B.A.s that have the training. We really implore you guys to make sure this. Etowah actually has something written in where basically, when kids come into the district, they get it behavioral support right away, if there is any reason or if they have any diagnosis, and we should not wait months or years to help these kids. We need to bring our teachers back. The teachers that were suddenly let go on the same day that the principal was let go, we need our teachers back. As you heard, Ms. Curry, Ms. Hernandez, we want those teachers back, and we really want to make sure that when Ms. B.C. hopefully returns, we'll be able to bring her back.
Thank you.
Tricia Colley, followed by Deborah Johnson, followed by Misty Startup.
As most of the Board knows, I am a very active parent at Chino Hills High School, but what you may not know is I'm also a Townsend parent, as well as a Butterfield Ranch parent. So, what that means is I'll be here a long time. My son, Deegan, you just met him, he's a very active and intelligent child. He learns quickly. He has an amazing memory for facts and figures, but he is consistently unmotivated and easily bored. This leads to barely average grades and test scores. Ms. Curry found a way to change this. Ms. Curry's class has one of the highest A.R. test scores in the school. I'm sure this translates to standardized test scores as well. One of Ms. Curry's students won the spelling bee this week. Ms. Curry's class has the highest level of participation in both student and parents' activities. All of this is because of Ms. Curry. Any teacher can offer student rewards, like treasure boxes and treats. Ms. Curry, she motivates her students with learning and praise. Students who reach their monthly goals are rewarded with hands-on STEM activities. My son's favorite learning moments have come from activities that are hundred percent planned and executed by Ms. Curry. As a frequent visitor to the classroom, I've seen Ms. Curry praise students on what they are doing right while correcting what is wrong. This leaves us students with a desire to please Ms. Curry and themselves. She truly believes her students can accomplish anything, and she reminds them of this until they believe it themselves. My son recently completed a fifteen-page PowerPoint on the state of Minnesota. A few days before it was due, I asked if he needed my help or wanted me to proofread it. He told me, no. Ms. Curry said, this is not a parent project. My ten-year-old researched and completed a fifteen-page report on his own. This is the level of education and accomplishment that Ms. Curry expects from her students, and she receives it. Ms. Curry is the type of teacher that this district should be praising, and you should be looking for more just like her. I'm aware that you cannot comment on personnel issues, and I'm not asking you to. I am asking you to take the information that you've learned today and look into this issue. I'm asking you to do what's best for the students. Fifth grade is a critical year for curriculum standards. It's not a good grade to pull a teacher out mid-year. It's never good for our students to have a constant rollover of substitute teachers, as we have recently seen on the BRE campus. Our kids deserve the best education possible. As parents, it is our responsibility to do whatever we can to make that happen. I would never come and speak to this Board if I didn't truly feel the return of Mrs. Curry is what's best for my son, as well as his classmates. I will always fight for what is best for my son and all students. That is our job as adults. I'm asking the school Board to look into these issues and to right the wrongs that have occurred. I am asking you to put the students first.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Deborah Johnson, followed by Misty Startup, followed by Dave Denny.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Johnson, and I've been a parent at BRE for the past nine years and have been witness to our excellent neighborhood school changing drastically. Four years ago, we lost an amazing teacher to cancer. That same year, our best principal suddenly retired too, and after that, it has been constant change in administration each year. We've been in constant transition with no consistency, leaving a feeling of instability. The toxicity and stress at BRE have been, have had unsurmountable effects on everyone, especially our teachers. Recently, my daughter's teacher left mid-year, which caused an interruption in learning and academic progress. This created confusion for the kids and a feeling of uncertainty. Just a week ago today, one of our sixth-grade teachers exhibited stroke symptoms at school and was rushed to the hospital by paramedics. Every child is entitled to a free and appropriate education. However, with constant turnover and a revolving door of subs who don't know the curriculum or grade level standards, this is far from being appropriate. It's impossible for our children to learn effectively when there is no stability or consistency in the learning environment. We now have four classes without permanent teachers. We don't have a long-term sub for my daughter's class, and now we have three other classes that are also in need of long-term subs. The substitute pool is very limited, and we were promised a long-term sub by admin, but instead, our kids had a glorified babysitter. My daughter would come home from school and tell me that he was nice, but didn't know how to teach, and that if he didn't know the material, he'd skip it and just give them the answers. He lacked control over the kids and was observed using his cellphone in class and overheard saying that he wasn't paid enough for this. He was supposed to be a sub for thirteen days, but after four days, he was removed from his assignment. Just yesterday, I saw him on our campus subbing for another classroom. Our current sub is a huge improvement, but she's only there for thirty days. So, what happens next? Another revolving door of subs? How can our children learn under constant uncertainty and instability? The recent admin change was a bittersweet victory. As with that news, we also lost two more teachers that were part of our family. Our intentions were to support our teachers and promote positive change, but now, there is a void at BRE that no one is talking about. We're grateful for our new principal, Mrs. Warner. Her experience and personality have changed the vibe at our school, which was noticeable even on her first day. The administrators, the leader, and they set the tone for our school, which trickles down to staff, teachers, students, and parents. We are starting to feel hopeful for positive change as she welcomes back parent involvement. She's bringing back that feeling that elementary school should be a fun learning environment. Though we have hope, that there's still that feeling of uncertainty, which is unfortunate, because without our amazing teachers, we have nothing, and our children are the ones who will suffer. Mrs. Warner is amazing, but this too leaves a feeling of uncertainty. As she helps us to heal and make our school great again, the next school year will bring about change again with new administration. We already love her and want to keep her, or we want someone just like her that can continue the momentum of healing and growth as we attempt to make our school great again. My hope is for BRE to become a fun and positive place for learning like it used to be. However, we still have a long road ahead, but we're hoping for continued community support as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Misty Startup, followed by Dave Denny, followed by Lisa Juarez.
Hi, my name is Misty Startup. I have six kids, five girls, and one boy, including a special needs daughter, and our first grandbaby on the way. I've lived in Chino Hills for twenty-seven years, and I've had one child attending BRE over those twenty years. I calculated between all of my kids that we've had a hundred and seventy-seven teachers in this district, from kindergarten to high school, and it would be more if my daughter was in a regular ed class. Some of these teachers were great, some good, and some not our favorites. So, I think we know a little bit about good teachers. Just as my favorite teacher influenced me to become a nurse, my kids have been influenced by their teachers to become a speech pathologist, and a special education teacher, an occupational therapist, and an ASL interpreter. Our youngest is still up in the air. My son had Miss Crum last year and absolutely loved her. I volunteered to do Project Self-Esteem and enjoyed working with her once a month. She was a great teacher. It was very sad that she had had enough and decided to leave, but I don't blame her one bit. My son is currently in the fifth-grade class with Ms. Curry. We were completely shocked that she was suddenly out indefinitely with no explanation. My son came home the first day of school and said, I don't know, Mom, she's pretty strict. And I was thinking, yay, that's perfect. She's an amazing teacher. She's gotten my son to read and be excited about learning. He comes home on a daily basis, tells me about the things he's learned. Now, we're not just focused on soccer and video games. That is a complete success, if you ask me. I dealt with Mr. Bennett. He was the assistant principal at Chino Hills High, sat in on many IEPs with my special needs daughter. He was absolutely worthless. He never did anything he said. He never participated. He never interacted or gave any direction unless directly asked. It felt like he was put out by being there in those IEPs. My point is, he should never have been the principal at Butterfield, and whoever was responsible for that decision made a grave mistake. I knew it the minute he heard it. Even though he is gone, the damage is done, the devastating consequences cannot be rewound, and hundreds of people are left dealing with the aftermath of that poor leadership, which makes me question, who was Mr. Bennett's leader? The district? If so, I have a few words regarding that and special needs kids and getting the support they need. I've been working with the district seventeen years, IEP after IEP. My daughter was bused for eleven years to the Ontario Montclair District, because our district didn't have anything from moderate to severe classes, only mild to moderate. When she started high school, she was put in a county class on a district campus, and the feeling you get with that is that the district wants to deal, the district doesn't want to deal with a county class, as well as the feeling that the district has more important things or people to deal with. That was especially apparent.
Thank you.
With my daughter.
Dave Denny, followed by Lisa Juarez, followed by Jim Byers.
Dr. Enfield, President Schaefer, Board members, parents and teachers, good evening and thank you for your attention this evening. For an optimal partnership between parents, teachers, and administrators, there needs to be a clear and transparent communication in all directions. Communication between teachers and parents has been great, but from administrators to parents, work is needed. My name is Dave Denny. I'm a father of a five-year-old daughter in kindergarten at BRE Butterfield Ranch Elementary and three, a three-year-old that we hope to send there. We moved to Chino Hills and bought our home specifically so our children could attend BRE. We have learned in recent weeks of many disturbing issues at BRE, such as students assaulting, hitting, and bullying other students and teachers in various grade levels. We learned of these issues through the local news, social media, and other parents, not from the BRE administration, the superintendent, or the school Board. This is not acceptable. Even more disturbing, we've been told nothing as to what will be done to address the various safety-related concerns of teachers and parents. I am sympathetic to the position you are in as leaders. I am sure it is not an easy role to fill. However, if we as individuals and a community don't learn from our mistakes, we're bound to repeat them. Here are just a few examples where clear communication is needed and has not been received. Bullying, as I mentioned, is a real issue at BRE and must be addressed. We need specific guidelines and plans to be followed. Support and services for students with special needs are needed, while maintaining the proper learning environment for all students. Another example, the attendance policy was arbitrarily changed with no communication to parents recently. And another side note, we've heard nothing proactively pushed out about the coronavirus, yet it could be a very real health concern. I've heard it from other districts and my three-year-old's Montessori school almost a month ago. When we have asked for information or inquired about plans to address safety concerns, two regarding specific instances of outbursts occurring in Mrs. B.C.'s class, which involved physical contact to our daughter, we received answers like, I'm unable to comment at this time, safety is our top priority, or appropriate personnel are involved to address the matter. The communication, this communication is not transparent, does not show action, and does not map out a plan. This is not leadership.
Hi, my name is Deegan Colley. I am in fifth grade at Butterfield Ranch Elementary School in Ms. Curry's class. I want my teacher, Ms. Curry, to come back. Ms. Curry is a great teacher because Ms. Curry, I mean, Ms. Curry is a great teacher because she teaches us fun activities like making football goalposts and building bridges from straws and pipe cleaners. I like the way she teaches math and online math games we get to play. Please helping my teacher, Ms. Curry, back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to you this evening. My name is Lisa Juarez, and I'm a Butterfield Ranch mother. I've been a mother for six years with children going to this school. The Butterfield Ranch teachers are amazing human beings. That's my humble opinion. Thank you for letting me share it. I want to speak to you this evening on behalf of a few specific teachers. These teachers have directly impacted my children in a very positive way. Mrs. B.C., Mrs. Curry, Mrs. Crum, and Mrs. Hernandez, all have had my children in one fashion or another, one year or another. All of these teachers have shown a great interest in the betterment of my children, and I've witnessed it myself. We always, as parents, we had this innate need for our children to have better than we did. I see that at Butterfield Ranch through these teachers. They are the difference in my children's lives. My children both have suffered with attention issues, and it's becoming more common problem. My son is now at Townsend, earning a three-point-eight GPA and in accelerated math. This is, he's working hard, for sure, but this is a direct outcome from the impact of these teachers. I believe it, one-hundred-and-ten percent. All BRE teachers show a passion for the kids, a passion the kids need, and a passion that us as adults and parents need. I'm here this evening to ask you to put these teachers back to work, allow them to do what they were born to do. Mrs. Hernandez has been instrumental in implementing an IEP plan for my daughter. She did that this year. She's amazing. My daughter needs her role model back. My daughter's struggled a lot with self-esteem issues. Ms. Hernandez asked for a dossier on my daughter. I filled up the page and wrote on the other side. She utilized all of that information to bond with my daughter and allow her to bond with her and allowed the process to happen a lot better. She's doing really well. At this moment in time, her progress is at a standstill. Ms. Hernandez is not there. I'm asking you to bring her back for my daughter. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Byers, followed by Mary Busher, followed by Jane Lynn.
My name is James Byers. I'm a grandparent of a nice young student at Butterfield Ranch Elementary. He's in kindergarten. Lot of people come up and they make complaints. I'm not making a complaint. What I want to do is I want to submit a challenge to the school district. I researched a school, the closest elementary school to Butterfield Ranch is Wickman Elementary. Wickman Elementary's statewide ranking is four-hundred-and-ninety-six. Butterfield Ranch Elementary is one-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-seven. I challenged the school district to bring Butterfield Ranch Elementary up to at least four-hundred-and-ninety-six, or to exceed the statewide ranking of a local school three-point-eight miles away, Wickman Elementary. I think that's attainable, and if this district would proactively work with Butterfield Ranch, I think you'd succeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Busher, followed by Jay Lynn, followed by Amy Desmond.
Hi, my name is Mary Butcher, and I'm the mother of two girls who are part of the Chino Valley Unified School District. My youngest daughter attends BRE and has been severely impacted by the recent incident that took place in her class. She has lost her beloved teacher, who has been placed on an administrative leave for something I feel could have been prevented and/or minimized had the proper supports been in place. I come to you tonight on behalf of all those kids that have special needs and for their parents to give them a voice and to shine light on what is not right in our district. I have firsthand experience with this, as my oldest daughter has special needs, to include autism and developmental coordination disorder. As a parent, you want the best for your child, and you never want them to have to struggle. It took much effort on our part to figure out what was not quite right with our daughter. When we came to terms with it and got the medical diagnosis we needed, we thought, now that she, now that she can get the help she needed, but we were wrong. We got introduced to what an IEP is and dealt with much frustration when told that she wasn't bad enough to require additional support. We went from Butterfield to Glenmead to Oakridge, and now finally Country Springs to have the best fit for her. She needed to be in a place that had the personnel that could deal with her, with kids with similar needs and issues. She needed the additional support of an aide to keep her on task and motivated. This process of finding her the right fit took over three years, three advocates, one lawyer, and a state complaint before we could make things happen. This has all been a learning experience and process on the one, and the one that suffers the most is the kids and the teachers. There is a special education department, and there are funds allocated for it. So, please, can we help all the kids get the support they need to help them be the amazing and functional humans that they have the potential to be? My daughter is smart and loves to learn, and because of the incredibly slow process that is set in place, she at one point turned into a kid that was fearful and hated going to school, developed bad behaviors, and didn't want to participate in her learning environment. Now that we are finally at the right place, she's engaging more with her world and being a more willing participant in her education. There has to be a way to expedite this process so that kids can get the help they need without having to resort to lawyers and advocates. And I had firsthand experience in my daughter's class at BRE. I saw two of the kids who, when you gave them the proper attention, the proper support, they have the potential to be good kids, but they have things that they need extra help with, and it's not fair for a teacher to have twenty-five to thirty kids in her class that she has to mind, in addition to these kids that need that one-on-one support. They need behavioral support. They need these things, and I felt something that's not out of our, you know, realm that we could do that for them, but they make this process so slow, and it's just so frustrating as a parent, because we had to go through so much for our kids, and that's why I'm even more passionate about it. I don't want other families to have to go through this, especially the kindergarten level. That's where we shape them, and they start their, you know, careers as being a kid and a student. They shouldn't have to worry about being hit or, you know, all these things that happen to them. So, I'm just asking you to look into this process, try to, can we make it faster and smoother so that not everybody has to go through what we had to go through with our daughter? Thank you.
Thank you. Jay?
First, I would like to thank the Chino Valley Unified School District for finally addressing the parents' and teachers' concerns regarding the leadership at Butterfield Ranch Elementary School. We look forward to working with Mrs. Warner and Ms. Friedman to create an environment where both teachers and students will receive the support they need to thrive. With that being said, it is unfortunate that such drastic measures had to be taken by the parents in order for this change to occur. I spoke at the last board meeting and voiced my concerns regarding a child in my daughter's kindergarten class, who had physically injured other students, as well as the teacher, on multiple occasions. Unfortunately, a week after the board meeting, this kindergarten teacher was placed on administrative leave due to an alleged incident with the same child. This teacher truly cared about her students and wanted them all to succeed. She was incredibly patient, kind, and had a passion for teaching. My daughter adored her, and is heartbroken she is no longer present in the classroom. Following this unfortunate event, the Daily Bulletin published an article regarding the incident and included a quote from the administration that stated, "Providing a safe and secure learning environment for our students has and always will be our first priority as a school district." For those of us who have heard our children speak about the behavior they witnessed in this kindergarten classroom, it is clear, safety has not been a priority at Butterfield. The district was well aware of this child's behavior, that he remained in the classroom for a month. The district's failure to help this one kindergarten student has resulted in a lawsuit, an amazing teacher being put on administrative leave, the violation of twenty-five students' rights to be educated in a positive learning environment, free from disruption, and the failure to provide a safe environment for both morning kindergarten classes and their teachers. The moment this child inflicted injury on his teacher serious enough to send her to urgent care, he should have been removed from the classroom, if not the school. It is nothing short of amazing that this teacher was able to protect the children in her classroom from harm at the expense of herself, and for that, I would like to thank her. It is unfortunate the district failed to protect her. Moving forward, I hope the district and administration at Butterfield will be more proactive in addressing parents' and teacher concerns in a timely manner. If safety is really a priority for the district, please take action to help create a truly safe environment at Butterfield for our students and teachers. Lead by example by following the rules and education codes in the Parent and Student Information Handbook, instead of hiding behind them. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Anderson, followed by Dale Melton, followed by Marian Henderson.
Ma'am, if I could, before you start, we have exceeded the thirty minutes for public comments on this, on the non-agenda items. With consensus from the Board, we can continue to hear the rest of the...
I have a consensus.
Consensus. I agree.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent, Board meters, Board members, sorry, community, and any staff who may be here. First off, I want to say thank you for hearing our concerns at Butterfield and helping to start turning our school back around, but I also want to say, I hope you realize that it should not have gotten to this point. Our school has lost several wonderful teachers. This should not have gotten to a point where parents and students had to rally to make a point. I can only hope that not only the district and the Board can learn from this, and that in some cases, things need to be acted on in a more swift manner. And not just those in our district, but other districts as well. I hope that our district, other districts, see that if something's not right, you stand up for what you believe in, and you change, and you work to push for change and work to overcome the obstacles that are thrown in front of you. I thank the teachers at Butterfield Ranch for speaking up and demanding a healthy and safe working environment for themselves and a healthy and safe learning environment for our students. I thank the parents and students for working together to support our teachers and not stopping to make sure, and not stopping, keep moving forward to make sure that we get back to the healthy and safe learning environment that all of our children need to be in. Thank you.
Thank you. Dale Melton, followed by Marian Henderson, followed by Aldo Flores.
I'd like to thank you all for your time. It's much appreciated, and I thank you. I'm here, I've got two beautiful little girls that go to Butterfield Ranch Elementary School, and I know this has been a trying time for our school, our district, and all involved in the, in the current incident. I'm here to lend my support to the teachers at the school and also ask that the parents be heard. We know our kids. We don't want to control the schools or your district, but we can help you with our children and their learning environment. We see what happens when we're not necessarily a mob, but an organized group of parents that speak out, we can get results. When my oldest daughter first started going to BRE as a kindergarten or first grader, she was bused to school, and unfortunately, while she was on this bus, she was being bullied by another kid. The, once my daughter brought it to our attention, we also brought the attention to the school administration. Once we brought it to the school's attention, the principal had the bully and my daughter in the same room, they discussed the matter, and the problem was solved. You ask, how was this possible? Because the parents and our concerns were heard and acted on by both the principal and the administration and the district transportation, the bus people. Currently, I'm employed in law enforcement, and I've been so for the last twenty-four years, and I know for some of these kids that come to these schools, schools are the only source of normalcy in some of these kids' lives. It's the safest part of their day while they're at school. We need to help our teachers succeed, because whether we like it or not, they're going to be role models in our children's lives. Currently, some of those role models even attend some of my daughter's awards ceremonies outside of school. That's how much it will affect these teachers that have had on my kids. They go out of their way to invite their teachers to their events outside of school. We need to ensure that our schools are a safe environment for all, faculty, kids, and anybody involved. In closing, most importantly, I'd like to ask the Board, put aside all your political agendas, casting each other's opinions aside, and focus on what the school Board should be focusing on: our kids, our schools, and our safety. Thank you guys very much for your time.
Thank you. Marian Henderson.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Aldo Flores.
I am an attorney, and I am a parent of a student at BRE. In particular, my daughter is a kindergartner in Mrs. B.C.'s class. We came to this community in part based on the reputation of its schools. And as new parents, we came and we discovered that there were a lot of things going on. And we have since learned that our teachers are not being supported. They're not being supported, and in turn, that's impacting the education of our children. In particular, we believe that the inaction on the part of the district and the administration put Mrs. B.C. in a position where she is now. My daughter asks for her teacher. She asks, "When will Mrs. B.C. return?" We don't know, and we hope she does. The parents are now contemplating bringing legal action to protect the rights of the rest of the students who are being impacted here, other than the child at issue that brought upon the reason for which Mrs. B.C. was put on leave. We ask you to please listen, please take action, give us an action plan. Do not force her hand. We do not want to bring legal action. We want to work with you. We saw a direct response. Great. You heard us. We seek further action, and we want this to be played out thoroughly. So no more incidents such as these ever occur again where a great teacher such as Mrs. B.C. is no longer teaching at Butterfield Ranch Elementary. I welcome a response from this district. We are here. We demand an action plan by the district. We want to hear. We do not want a lack of response. We do not want what happened with the prior principal who is no longer here. With that, I welcome a response on the part of the district. We welcome the new interim principal, and we look forward to working with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I need to serve in person. The judge said it had to be served in person, so I've done what the judge has said and served you in person. The situation with this case is really over a few hundred dollars of help for a certain kid, which the district wants to interpret a settlement agreement in such a way as not to give him a few hundred dollars worth of stuff. Well, we've had a lot of motion work. After we lost at the Office of Administrative hearings here, the mom is, and it is literally a federal case. That is how determined this district is to deny help to kids with learning disabilities who need help. And I didn't know about this party before I came here today. I just had my own business. And I don't know anything about it, but this I do know, that kids get violently treated by teachers and stuff like that, and it's covered up. And teachers get violently assaulted by kids, who are mostly not getting the help that they need, and that's why, and that gets blown off, too. So you've got some mad teachers, and you've got some mad parents, and you have some traumatized kids, and they're all right. Because you have a special ed department which is determined to deny kids the help that they need. So everybody gets ripped off. Anybody who thinks that this is a contest between teachers and parents is mistaken. That's like in the bad old days when people made it a contest between black sharecroppers and white sharecroppers. The people that were ripping them off were the common enemy. They didn't get this. That's what it is here. You're ripping off teachers, you're ripping off kids, and you're ripping off parents because you will spend all kinds of money on lawyers in order to do kids out of what they need. If you were indifferent, if you just didn't care, it would go so much better for these kids. But you work hard, and you spend lots of money on lawyers. That's why it is how to serve this federal paperwork, because you are dedicated to making sure the kids don't get what they need, and you'll spend all kinds of money on lawyers to do it. Now, I wish the five of you would think about that and see if it makes any sense.
Thank you.
Priscilla Iglesias?
Pat, what was the name? I'm sorry.
Priscilla Iglesias.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening. I am a parent at BRE. My daughter Paige's assignments is currently in Mrs. B.C.'s class. Now, because of everything of the incident that has occurred, my daughter is considered a problem. And as adults and educators, "problem" is not the proper term for children that need or in need of special needs or behaviors or disabilities. Now, Mrs. B.C. is, has been a wonderful teacher. She's been patient with my daughter. She's always motivated, always positive, and for her, as I see, for her to want to take these children that many would consider a problem shows what type of educator that she is. Because just because you have a degree does not make you a well, make you a well educator in this system. And I truly believe that teachers can be trained more in dealing with children, or not dealing, but addressing any incidents that might happen with children that have these special needs and acquire this extra special attention. Now, this child had a special, had a teacher's aide. Where was the aide at that time? We have this. I have another child who's in special ed, who is in a special ed class, who I removed from Butterfield Ranch, because at that time, there was no funding, there was no need for that. But I know as the district, you guys are doing what you can to help these children. But as for my daughter, she, you know, she saw the incident, and it just kind of, you know, she saw that it wasn't right. But as parents, we need to take responsibility as parents for our children's actions, and we're the ones that have to tell them and instill in them the behaviors that are appropriate and not at school.
Thank you.